You want to see?
No.
Your lead team being at six oh five. Um, next up, adoption and approval of the agenda. Negative motion.
I'm going to adopt and approve the agenda.
A second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Um, special recognitions reports and presentations. Um, first announcement of our new communications coordinator. It's you, Jason?
Yes.
Come on up.
Stand in the squares.
What's that?
You can move your computer. Are you lonely?
Okay, all right. Great. Well, we're excited to announce Amy Fedasi is the new communications coordinator for Pedaluma City Schools. Amy will continue her duties as principal of Pangrove Elementary School through the end of the school year and begin her new duties as communications coordinator on July first, twenty twenty two. Amy began her career with PCS in twenty twelve when she was hired to lead Pangrove Elementary. Prior coming to Pedaluma City Schools, Amy taught English as a second language to K five students as well as second and third grade Mobile, Alabama, Ameren County. During her time at Pangrove, Amy developed strong relationships with many PCS employees and built strong community connections that will lay the foundation for her work in this new role. One of Amy's strengths is passionately telling the story of her school by encouraging, celebrating, and honoring students, staff, and families. We are eager for Amy to be, to bring that passion and creativity to the district level. As a communications coordinator, Amy will be responsible for ensuring our district's public information program aligns with district goals and the communication needs of the community. She will serve as a functional lead for student enrollment and oversee the district's outreach to prospective students and families. Amy will use her marketing and public relations skills to produce media news releases and reports to inform the community and highlight the teaching and learning in our district. Working closely with each site administrator, Amy will promote the vision of each of our unique schools and departments with her contagious enthusiasm. Please join us in congratulating Amy on this new opportunity.
Yes. You don't want to say a few words? You don't actually have to.
I just honestly, I um, I told my staff that I've never looked for another job. Of going there. And when I saw this position, I was like, and I could feel myself getting more and more excited and it just feels like such an amazing, uh, perfect fit and transition. And I'll learn to step to a microphone. So, um, yeah, I'm so, I'm so excited. I'm thrilled. I'm gonna miss Pangrove and I can't wait to be on all the other campuses and in all of our departments and really, um, it's gonna be a good boss break and I'm ready to take a lot of direction and hit the, the ground running. So thank you so much.
All right, thank you. All right, on to students of the month. Um, are we doing Kennelworth first? How beautifully dressed.
What presenters so far? They're coming in. And the other ones there as well, women in the pants.
All right, all right. Welcome, everyone. Who's our reader or readers for tonight? All right, so I'm sure you guys know which one's going first, so go ahead.
Uh, how about me?
Oh, Mr. Everett.
Fun there. So anyhow, um, great to see you all and it's great to be here tonight. And, um, uh, I first would like to introduce our amazing leadership students, um, Ashleen Mann and Kelly Johnson, who will present our outstanding students of the month Quincy Miller and Elizabeth Chu. So Ashleen or Kelly, you'll go ahead first.
Kennelworth Junior High School is proud to introduce our April Student of the Month Quincy Miller. Kennelworth's teachers have chosen Quincy for Student of the Month because of his positive attitude and strong academic accomplishments. Quincy's teachers had many positive remarks to share about this exceptional young man. Mr. Radke Quincy's science teacher says Quincy is a cheerful, friendly student who can be counted upon to be on task, consistent in his work, and helpful with his classmates. He's always ready to go at the start of class, participates in class and partner discussions, and engages with scientific material, often asking follow-up questions for more knowledge or clarification. He's wonderful to have in class. Mr. Quintua from history says Quincy has a great work ethic to go along with his wonderful sense of humor. He's always on task, attentive, and willing to help others. Aside from all his hard work, Quincy tries his best to not laugh out loud at all my bad jokes. Congratulations, K-Town. Ms. Maneras Quincy's math teacher says Quincy is an excellent math student. Quincy works hard on math each day to complete each assignment. Quincy can be depended on to work well on his own and with his table group. Quincy is always friendly and polite with his classmates and willing to answer questions when asked. Quincy has an impressively positive attitude, which he has maintained through many large changes in his life over the past few years. Quincy and his family moved to Pedaluma from New Zealand at the end of his fourth grade year. Quincy has managed to make strong friendships, navigate distance learning while keeping high grades, and made the transition to junior high, all with a smile and open-minded attitude. Quincy is most academically evidenced by his four point O GPA. Quincy is looking forward to taking honors English in high school and has recently found math to be one of his favorite classes with increasing level of difficulty. Outside of school, Quincy enjoys fishing and playing video games with his neighbors and family, and shared that he enjoys making intricate builds out of Legos. Quincy says, I enjoy being immersed in a world where you can create anything you want. With his creativity, open-mindedness, and positive attitude, the Kennelworth team is confident Quincy will do great things. Congratu- congratulations Quincy for your accomplishments.
Kennelworth Junior High School is proud to introduce our other April Student of the Month Elizabeth Chu. Elizabeth has been chosen as Student of the Month by her team of teachers because she is a smart, talented young woman who puts her best into everything she does. Mrs. Maneras Elizabeth's math teacher says Elizabeth is an excellent math student. Elizabeth is in advanced math class and puts a great amount of effort into every assignment. Elizabeth shows great detail and insight in her math work. Elizabeth is also friendly and polite in class with all of her classmates and is always willing to listen and answer questions in class. Mr. Quintua Elizabeth's history teacher says Elizabeth has been outstanding students since day one. She can always be counted on to have her work completed on time and of the highest quality. Elizabeth is well-liked by her classmates and probably sports the best sweatshirt on campus, the one with full of noodles that simply says ramen. Congratulations. Ms. Fahey from PE says Elizabeth is an all-star. She's always engaged in every lesson and pushes herself to do her best. She is well-liked by her peers and is always willing to help out classmates. She is constantly leading by example. Elizabeth has impressively maintained a four point O GPA throughout her two years at Kennelworth and has taken on an academically rigorous class schedule. These classes include advanced math and advanced English. When asked what Elizabeth is proud of, she shared receiving good grades with her entire life makes her feel very proud. Elizabeth's list of accomplishments includes reaching the highest level in her ballet training as she is now at a level five. Elizabeth has been taking ballet lessons since she was six years old with the Santa Rosa Dance Theater and participates in regular performances, including the Nutcracker each year. At home, Elizabeth spends time baking desserts, cooking, and reading. Elizabeth also enjoys spending time with her friends, watching movies, and talking about books and music. Elizabeth's friends describe her as calm and happy and a great person to be around. Elizabeth plans to continue her academic pursuits in high school and hopes to attend college in a new area of the world. After graduating from college, Elizabeth is considering pursuing a career as a speech and linguist pathologist. Elizabeth is a role model student and Kennelworth is extremely proud to call her a cult. Congratulations, Elizabeth, for your accomplishments.
All right, thank you both so much. Congratulations. All right, next up, we have Pedaluma Junior High School.
Good evening. This is Dana Rocke, Assistant Principal from Pedaluma Junior, and we have our, two of our leadership students to present tonight. Um, Audrey, would you start please for us? Thank you.
We are very excited to present Dashkin Pa- Pa- I'm so sorry. Pagadala as one of our April twenty twenty two Students of the Month. Dashkin was born on March sixteenth, two thousand eight in Manhattan and is new to our district this year. Dashkin is an excellent student who has earned all A's in more advanced classes and he's one of our top math students. He appreciates being challenged in classes so that he can expand his limits and exceed his expectations. His teachers recognize his strength. His math teacher comments Dashkin has a rare combination of attention to detail and ability to focus on essentials. His quick intelligence and hard work make him a competent proponent to of his own ideas or a willing listener to others. When Dashkin is in a math group, I can count on a spirited discussion of math. He is a pleasure to have in the classroom. STEM teacher adds, I love Dashkin's enthusiasm for the wide range of topics and science that we cover. His interest is clear to see and he is always willing to help and willing to share what he knows. Beyond academics, Dashkin values citizenship, enjoys helping others and strives to be a good role model. With his spare time, Dashkin enjoys playing basketball, swimming, and taking himself walks. He also competed in tennis, chess, soccer, cricket, and cricket. Uh, always demonstrating good sportsmanship along with his talents. Dashkin's family is extremely proud of him and had this to add. Dashkin has been a very organized, self-disciplined child from a very young age. He is extremely kind and respectful to others. I love that he has a positive attitude towards everything in life. He loves his sister and helps her out with a lot of things. I think his passion is to be a leader and I hope to see him become one one day. We agree that Dashkin Pagadala demonstrates a fine, this demonstrates fine leadership qualities already. We are so pleased to have him represent Pedaluma Junior High School as Student of the Month.
Thank you, Audrey. Connor, would you like to go?
Here Fratch presents Lily Cruz is one of our April twenty twenty two Students of the Month. Lily is a highly capable and motivated individual. She looks forward to traveling abroad someday, meeting new people from other cultures. Academically, Lily is a strong student. She is very engaged in her learning and demonstrates leadership qualities in the classroom. This year, Lily particularly enjoys science, history, and English classes. Not surprisingly, Lily's teachers see her strengths too. Her math teacher comments Lily was a bright, attentive, and hardworking student from the start. She has developed from a quiet presence in the classroom to a confident member of a group. She's often the student who assists others to understand a new concept, who inspires the group to stay on task by focusing on moving forward with her work. Her class leadership helps to create an active learning environment for herself and her peers. Her STEM teacher adds, her STEM teacher adds Lily is a fantastic student to have in class. She will fully commit to any project we are doing in class while quietly indigent- vigilant, working with those in her group. Outside of school, much of Lily's time is spent on the water. About six months ago, Lily joined Rivertown Racers Padling Club as a competitive kayaker and she absolutely loves it. Her team has done well and Lily is excited to have the opportunity to attend Nationals in August, which will be taking place in Ohio. Lily also draws as much uh, as possible in her spare time and is considering a career that exercises her artistic skills. Her parents are very pleased that Lily was selected for this award. Her father adds Lily has always been a fastidious student and a hard worker. I'm very proud and hoping she keeps it up. We are also very proud of this caring, hardworking young wo- young woman. We are honored to have Lily Cruz represent Pedaluma Junior High School as Student of the Month.
All right, congratulations and thank you both for reading. All right, moving on to Casa.
Okay, um, our first student of the month is Colin Patchett. Colin apologizes he is not at tonight's meeting. The CGHS lacrosse team has their final practice tonight before the battle for the paddle game against Pedaluma High School tomorrow. Colin is a three-sport varsity athlete who plays lacrosse, football, and basketball. He was voted football MVP this past season. He was a captain for the football team and is currently a captain on the lacrosse team. Colin was chosen as a Casa Grande High School male scholar athlete of the year. When Colin is not playing sports or doing homework for one of his four AP classes, he likes to hang out with his friends and his pets. His family has three dogs, two cats, a cockatiel, a rabbit, and twenty-three dart frogs. Colin has worked as a lacrosse referee and a volunteer coach, which he finds very rewarding. He will attend Vassar College next fall to study economics and play NCAA D three lacrosse. Colin would like to thank all the amazing coaches and teachers he has had at Casa Grande High School. Go Gaucho's. Our second student of the month is Heather Mahoney. Heather is a highly motivated senior at Casa Grande, who has continued to maintain balance between her rigorous studies, involvement in the community as an ambassador Girl Scout, and involvement in multiple sports and competitions. Playing on Team USA racquetball yearly since she was eight years old, earning a starting position on her high school varsity soccer team as a freshman, receiving her bronze and silver Girl Scout awards, and maintaining a four point three GPA while still making time for her family and friends is something that she feels is very important. Currently, Heather is taking four AP classes and her favorite AP Environmental Science affirms her choices to help better the planet and has opened her eyes to different aspects of environmental issues. She plans to continue her studies and pursue a degree in environmental science. She loves to travel around the world and plans to hopefully include studying abroad in college. She is deciding between UC Santa Barbara and UC Berkeley to continue her education and is excited for what the future has in store for her. Congratulations, Heather.
All right, congratulations Colin and Heather and thank you Josie for reading as always. All right, moving on to Pedaluma High School. Looks like we just have the one in person. All right, come on up. Oh, cool.
Yeah.
Now we're gonna have Caitlin Quinn, since she's best dressed today, present you with your.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Pedaluma High School Student of the Month for the month of April Stella Francis. Stella Francis is a Pedaluma High School senior and is excited to study creative writing at Santa Barbara City College this fall, where she will work for their student-run newspaper, The Channels, and their literary magazine, Open Fruit. After two years, Stella will transfer to UC Santa Barbara, where she will work for their student.
Oh, no.
And continue to study English literature. Stella has been involved with Pedaluma High School's newspaper, The Trojan Tribune, since her sophomore year. She has worked up the ranks to arts and opinions editor and co-head copy editor and will likely pursue a path in writing or editing post-college. Regardless of whether or not that career is in the field of journalism, this class has shown her how much she loves to read, write, and edit, and it has been a major factor in her decision to study English language throughout college. Outside of class, Stella's hobbies include read, writing, reading, and anything involving music. She particularly enjoys live music and recently, with the help from her friends, she organized a benefit concert at the Phoenix Theater that raised almost nine hundred dollars for The Trojan Tribune.
Awesome.
Lily says that she could be where she is, she could not be where she is today without the love, help, and support of her family, friends, and of course, her cat. Provided for her throughout her time here and is excited that it has prepared her for the next phase of her life. Congratulations Stella.
I'm so glad you came in.
Yeah, thank you.
Really lovely to have somebody here.
All right, next up is our student board report from Grant. Oh, never mind.
Student of the semester.
Seventh grade is pleased to present Rafael Nasco to the board for the PACS Fall Semester Award. Rafael is a humble, determined, and hardworking student. He comes to school each day with a positive attitude and an admirable drive for success. Many qualities about Rafael make him stand out, but his quiet confidence shines above all the rest. Rafael works towards making, achieving exemplary grades, making meaningful friendships, supporting his peers, and developing his talents in martial arts. Through all of his achievements, Rafael remains humble and grounded. Rafael's parents shared a story from his sixth grade graduation from Meadow, Meadow Elementary. They said, we got feedback from the teachers every year on how Rafael is a good student. During the outdoor ceremony, graduation ceremony, he called, they called up ten students to receive the prestigious president's award. We listened, hoping he got called, but alas, nothing. It didn't matter to us because we were proud of him no matter what. He didn't mind as well because he didn't like to be on the spotlight. At the end of the ceremony, we thanked all of the teachers. On the way home, a student came to us stating that he, there was a certificate with Rafael's name on it and the president's award had been stuck behind his certificate. We are naturally shocked but delighted at the same time. Knowing your son's character, we didn't make a big deal about it and he just wanted us to spend the summer being a kid. There is another example of Rafael's humble confidence and gracious attitude. Rafael's parents added that their son loves to be challenged and thrives in a rigorous learning environment. Rafael said to his parents, Mom and Dad, I have big ideas. As Rafael's PACS teachers, we are extremely proud of him and can't wait to see his big ideas come to fruition. We know that Rafael is meant for great things. Congratulations Rafael. Eighth grade is very pleased to present Lucas Hess to the board for the PACS Fall Semester Award. Lucas strives to achieve in all subject areas and regularly seeks out teacher support and feedback. Since he does not just focus on grades or scores, he is willing to ask questions in order to learn and understand challenging new concepts. In the classroom, he's extremely kind and helpful when working with his classmates. He is never in a hurry to finish his work and will patiently wait to help his partner or group with a difficult problem. At the same time, he is also willing to ask for and accept the help of his peers when he needs it. Additionally, Lucas submits very thorough work that demonstrates the incredible time effort he puts forth in all that he does. Lucas's mom shares he has really worked hard the past two years. While Lucas has always been motivated and even as a little kid was able to make things happen for himself that he wanted. Early on during Zoom school, I saw him spending time developing good study habits to learn better. I saw his motivation and ability shift during that time as he discovered ways that worked for him to study, learn, and get his work done while also having time to pursue other interests he likes like coffee, running, and rowing. Lucas's dad shares Lucas is certainly driven to succeed. He is constantly looking for ways to get the most out of his time and to have fun doing it. He's always reading for the next, ready for the next adventure and is very effective at making things happen. Lately, we've been creating a lot of aerial photography with a drone and he's a very good partner at that. When he is with me, I have never have to utter a word about studying and doing his homework as he is charged from within. Congratulations Lucas. PACS honored to have you as a student.
All right, congratulations. Thank you all. Now. I know. Congratulations. Thank you.
We really appreciate it.
Congratulations, Amy.
Hello, Pedaluma City School Board and Pedaluma City School Community. It's Amanda Gray, Principal of Grant Elementary School, and I am standing in the exact same place as I stood one year ago as we were welcoming our students back on campus for distance learning and we shared that with you for our board presentation. And today I want to share with you a little bit about what's happening at every grade level at Grant Elementary School and show you all the great things that we've accomplished this year being on here together at the Grant School Campus and learning as a community. So come with me and we'll check out what's happening.
Hi Nick, my name's Mrs. Carrie. I'm a kindergarten teacher at Grant School. We are doing a project called Monsters Need Shade where the students are being engineers. They're using different recyclables to build shade structures that we're gonna test out with little mini monsters and they're gonna use thermometers to measure temperature and learn the difference between hot and cold. Nola, what project are we doing?
We are making, um, um, shelters for monsters because mo- because the monsters are hot, are want to play, but they are getting hot in the sun.
Izzy, what would you like to add?
I don't know, it's scary. So we're using like materials, egg cartons, cardboard boxes. cardboard boxes, plastic containers, and tape, and also toilet paper tubes.
Hi, I'm Chelsea Wilson, first-grade teacher. We've been studying light waves, and in our culminating project, they're working on making puppet shows, or shadow puppet shows.
Hi, my name is Hazel, in Ms. Wilson's first-grade class, and I, we've been making shadow puppets. I have a tree, and here is a magic wand. The L actually stands for live, if you are wondering, and these are sticks that fell from that tree, the tree, and this is a girl, and this one's.
Hello and welcome to our first-grade rainforest. Above me is some of my students' hard work that we have been putting together over the last couple weeks, starting before spring break. What we do here in the rainforest is that we learn about the different animals and plants. The kids get to ask me the questions and we Google it together. Then it follows up with a writing component where they're writing their own book, and then we build the actual animal to put it into our rainforest. And so there's art, there's writing, there's science, and my students will now get a chance to tell you their favorite part of it.
Hi, my name is Addison, and I'm in Ms. Bieber's class, and my favorite part is how our community has so many different types of animals and stuff like that, and I really like all the animals that we have in these places here.
Hi, my name is Reese. Our second-grade class is studying the black-throated gray warbler, the orange-crowned warbler, and the Wilson's warbler. I am studying the Wilson's warbler. Our pen, we are pen pals with a class in Mexico that is also studying the warblers.
Hi, my name is Tino. I am studying the tree swallow. It, my bird eats insects, fruits, and seeds. Its colors are iridescent and its tail is black. This project is about the tree swallow, and I love to learn about tree swallows. I love their colors.
Hi, my name is Finley, and I choose to study the violet-green swallow. My bird eats grasshoppers, beetles, wasps, ants, flies, and bees. Its colors are blue, green, and violet above. This project is very, very fun.
Third grade has been very exciting this year. We have been learning about the history of Petaluma. Did you know that the incubator was invented of Petaluma? Petaluma is known as the chicken capital of the world. Did you know that the Petaluma River used to be called the Creek? And it changed to the Petaluma River to get federal funding for dredging. Petaluma is rich with history.
Hi, my name is Quinn.
Hi, my name is Adeline.
In our third-grade rotation, we learned about Maya Angelou and Jean-Michel Basquiat for Black History Month.
We wrote poetry just like Maya Angelou. Our poems are called "Life Doesn't Frighten Me At All."
Then we drew dragons just like Basquiat to go with our poetry. Bye, have a nice day.
Hi, I'm Denise Reyes at Grant, and I teach fourth grade. And what you're gonna see as the video goes around is my students in groups that they are doing problem-solving. And we talk a lot about having numbers, pictures, and words for every problem so that they are able to prove their thinking in three different ways. So you'll see them in groups, communicating with each other, talking about what they think is happening. Hopefully, they're passing the pen after they write something. So it's a lot of fun, they enjoy it, and they really learn a lot from each other.
Hi, I'm Vivi.
And I'm Emma.
And in fourth grade, you do a passion project. A passion project is something that you're passionate about and interested in.
A passion project is a subject that you wanna learn about. It is, and ours was about the ocean.
And our favorite part was the animals that we learned about.
Hi, my name is Bia.
And my name's Aaliyah.
And we decided to do our passion project on dolphins.
Because.
Because dolphins are intelligent and smart, and they can dive up to 1,000 feet.
Hi, I'm Kelly from fifth grade, and our class had the assignment to do magazines. Each of us had to pick a topic, a big topic from around the world.
Hi, I'm Billy, and we each had, each paragraph had to be about a different text structure, such as compare and contrast and description.
Hi, I'm Bella from fifth grade, and we also had to find pictures for, like, about our article that were not copyrighted.
Hi, my name is Jordan, and my, my magazine was on wildfires.
Hi, my name is Ben. My magazine topic is nuclear fusion. Some of my articles were about like life of a star and like how nuclear fusion is made.
Hi, my name is Roan, and my article is about airplanes because I've been interested in planes for a year and a half now. And some of my articles are how planes fly, the history of planes, and comparing big planes and small planes, and, and plane crashes.
Hi, my name's Alex, and we just got back from our sixth-grade camping trip at Westminster Woods. I felt that Westminster Woods was a great place to have teamwork and leadership-building activities, where we did challenge courses where students are just cheering on their peers, and I felt it was really nice. And even when we had to do so-and-so activities, we just felt really down to, you know, we're all connected in some way through teamwork.
Hi, I'm Caitlin, and I think sixth-grade camp was very peaceful with all the views we saw. And I think with all like the active activities and socializing with everyone, it stops you from stressing out.
Hi, my name is Ben. I'm a sixth grader at Grant. And I, when I went to Westminster Woods, I really felt like down-to-earth and connected with nature because we didn't have like any technology, and we really just had to like depend on ourselves and our instincts.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for sharing everything going on at your school. Yeah, that's great. All right. Is this you, Tony? Instructional design framework presentation?
Yes, it is.
All right. Thank you, Amanda.
Thanks, Amanda.
Thanks, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. That was great.
Still getting power in fifth grade, third grade. Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so when I was in sixth grade, it's a true story. I ran away from home. I was not the strongest student, and I struggled in elementary and pretty much middle school. I was tired of feeling inadequate at 12 years old, and so I had this feeling that maybe I don't wanna be a burden. I'm going to run away, take the $20 I have that should last me a year, and live in the mall.
And live where?
In the mall.
Got it.
So I, sixth period was my science class, and I took off to the bathroom and never came back. Long story short, had a lot of heart-to-heart with my family. I had to have a lot of heart-to-heart with my teachers, but particularly my sixth-period teacher that I left classroom. He was my favorite teacher and my favorite subject. The conversation I had with him and what he said to me changed my life, and I'll share that with you later in this presentation. But, so I'll get us through this presentation first here. So in the fall, we embarked on inequities studies through the consultation with Arrend Education. They presented to site administration, teacher-union leadership, and board meeting prior to starting their work in November. And the purpose of their work was to look at inequities in regards to our systems. We knew based on review of our dashboard and state assessment data that there are inequities. However, to what extent, we're not as clear, and so we wanted to have an outside perspective to shed some light on to what extent our current systems are contributing to the inequities as well. So Arrend had a total of 14 team members working on this study to do a light-touch and deep-dive study to get a sampling of our systems. More details of their work is in the handout that I had just passed around. And my goal with this presentation tonight is to share some of that recommendations and our next steps moving forward as we build our instructional framework. So Arrend's process consisted of several processes and activities that I'll just run through quickly, just to build context for this presentation. So using the vulnerability index, they determined 10 schools that would get an in-depth, deep-dive look while the other schools received a light touch. Each deep-dive school received their own report and presented to, presented the report to each school staff. The light-touch school data was used to distinguish between school-specific and district-wide patterns. A part of this study of schools were surveys conducted to the school staff. The survey's results were analyzed and cross-tabulated and reviewed for trends as well as to help, helping to develop follow-up questions for the focus group interviews. The focus group allowed Arrend to dig deeper into the areas identified on the survey, which fell into three primary categories: academic program, student efficacy, and teacher collective efficacy. Participants were also encouraged to share perceptions that felt, that they felt were relevant for this review. They also conducted analysis of various achievement data over multiple years. The shadowing of students was also conducted at each deep-dive school to observe how students interacted with the content and materials within the classroom. In addition, transcripts were reviewed at each of the high schools. Admin interview, admin interviews began with predetermined questions and culminated with an open-ended discussion focused on ideas for improving, improving students and achievement at the school sites. Results were synthesized and included in the training evaluation process. So the study provided us with a wealth of data around achievement and shed light on the inequities. Clearly, the system doesn't work for all of our students. Large gaps between groups have been systemic within PCS, as we can tell from the large gaps between our student subgroups. So causes of this achievement gaps are multifaceted. Inconsistent expectations, no defined foundational rigor, knowledge, and skills, and when there is not clearly articulated systems of content and rigor, then belief systems drive what people do. It's just a natural human trait, but this is where inequities tend to grow. Schools, in the most part, have not been given a clear direction from the district, and when direction had been given, there isn't adequate capacity building to ensure follow-through, and no clear accountability process or the use of data systematically to drive those decision-making. Using data to drive decision-making is critical in our role as educators. We know that schools that try to teach all the standards in isolation with no meaningful team planning, with assessments that aren't aligned with expectations, the gap tends to widen. Schools that are heavily textbook-driven tend to be flat or stagnant in their data. But schools that are strategic about what they teach and backwards map from these targeted standards using assessments designed to be predictors of what students are accountable for and reflected on that data through a cycle of inquiry, tend to make greater gains, and the gap closes. The process, that process is part of the curriculum alignment, alignment process, which starts with an agreement on what should every student be expected to know and be able to do. Assessment matrix is not a scope and sequence, but an agreed-upon set of standards to be assessed for everyone. Common assessments are a part of the accountability system. We assess so we can reflect. The power of the assessments is coming together and finding solutions. Common assessments are not about teaching to the test. It is about improving teaching and giving our kids a richer and deeper education. The assessments are just the most direct route to interpreting the standards, a common interpretation that informs our teaching so that the net effect is that the level of instruction and the students, what the students are asked to do begin to rise. In fact, we are embarking on this process with math currently. At each, after each assessment, typically five or six total, there will be a reflection process facilitated by the administration, where each grade subject reflects on the data to determine which students are making progress and which ones are not. So it allows for the opportunity for teachers in grade level or subject level to sit together and look at their student data and highlight which students are progressing and not progressing, intentionally being mindful of our students with disabilities, our English learners, or any student subgroups that we wanna track and monitor. And after each assessment, they're allowed to see how the students are moving within, within the tiered system of the reflection process. The power within that reflection process is the agreements that the teachers make about what they're gonna do differently to support those students. The students who are below the line or are considered not proficient. What are we gonna do for those English learners? What are we gonna do for those students with disabilities? What are we gonna do for the, for the students that we're monitoring to see how they're progressing through? That conversation leads to those, those common agreements to which the site administration then can, can go and inspect because whatever is expected should be inspected. That process then leads into a greater conversation at a district level where it services, guides, guides and facilitates that reflection process with the site administration to look at the health, the health of the entire district and which schools might need extra support based on the data that we're seeing. That process also then goes up to cabinet level where the superintendent facilitates that conversation about where are we at our district and where, what resources do we need to use to support what we're seeing with the data so that we're not just throwing resources at everything, but that we're being targeted and specific based on what we're seeing so that we use our resources specifically for the, the challenges that we're seeing at our school site, all the way down from the school site to the classroom based on the data that we're seeing. So that articulation that allows us to look at not only particular groups of students, but also as a district-wide process to look at data to drive what we decide to do as a part of our system. So imagining that process happens five or six times a year, where we get to make those kinds of decisions before the year is out. And the power behind that is being able to intentionally drive and change the course of our students' achievement by being able to monitor them several times a year before they even take the, the smarter, smarter balance test. And from that, we'll be able to predict how the students will be doing and make any adjustments we need to before they actually take the test, the test to which the kids are being asked to be accountable for. So in addition, the test scores, we also saw achievement gaps in numerous other areas. The study pointed out such things as course access inequities, grade distribution inequities, inequities with graduation rates and A through G rates, inequities even with the graduation requirements. We also saw in the study inconsistencies across the district in regards to who can get into. We also saw in the study inconsistencies across the district in regards to who can get into certain classes. Some of these inequities can be, be in part solved by a simple policy update or change, but policy changes coupled with a system to serve as an early warning indicator can drastically help close those opportunity gaps. So guidance alignment is that early warning indicator system. It is a process where counseling staff and school leaders gather to look at data to illuminate inequities in tiered students based on greater needs of support. It's the understanding that there are other factors that contribute to low student achievement. Being able to identify systematic, social, emotional and cultural barriers can ensure more equitable opportunities for students. So similar to the data reflection process mentioned earlier with curriculum alignment, guidance alignment is where counseling staff and school leaders review specific indicators typically after each grading period or progress report and determine which students are not on track and why. It allows for counseling staff to determine if attendance is impacting student grades to look at attendance and figure out if they need to peel back that, that indicator to see if there's some sort of social, emotional need that needs to be addressed. Or some issues at home where they need to wrap around services. But it allows the counseling staff to, to start focusing on what the root causes are so the students can be successful in the classroom. It's a systematic process to which they'll look at the data just like the teachers will and focus on the students that actually need their support rather than trying to meet with every single student, you know, throughout the whole entire year and missing those students who actually need that support. It also allows them to catch students early, students who might be missing a class that, that would allow them to be A through G or courses that, that they aren't taking that would allow them to be competitive early on. And it allows them to have that conversation and that process early because they're, they're going through a systematic process to track which students are receiving the support they need and which students are not. So guidance alignment is, is just another layer to support the opportunity gaps that we're seeing as well as the equity gaps that we're seeing. Typically, it happens after every grading period because they want to look at grades, grades as a, as a strong indicator as well as affiliations. Depending on the grades, attendance are also strong indicators. There's research behind each one of those that helps determine whether or not the students will be on track. So typically, if they have met five of the six indicators, they're on track. But if however is determined which students are not on track, that's when they can start doing focus groups of students or meeting with groups of students who they see are not on track for, for, you know, college readiness, for example.
Is this happening now?
This is not happening now, but this is, um, this is a recommendation that the, the Renda Education had made. And it also is, it is not uncommon. It is actually pretty popular in regards to a lot of districts I've seen. They follow similar processes. In any event, there needs to be some kind of system to which we are monitoring our students. So whether it's guidance alignment or something else, we just don't currently have any system to, to track that or monitor students early before it's too late by the time they're seniors and we realize they've missed a couple of classes. Or as we've seen in the study, you know, some classes in their transcripts, they could have just had one semester and they would have been college eligible, for example. So, so all these systems are something that we have done, we have done, we haven't done in any kind of meaningful way. It would require a level of capacity to implement them well. And professional development will be critical if we are to ensure not only systems that is equitable for all students, but the ability for staff to implement them. In fact, professional development is one of our highest needs areas according to our youth truth survey. We have in the past provided a lot of professional development, but with little rhyme or reason. PD should be support, should support the current needs within the system and intentional, and be intentional with a strategic focus that builds upon itself. So for example, when we're looking at professional development for, for our school leaders, one big piece that we want to, want to help develop is their instructional leadership. We must build capacity with our student, with our school leaders to be instructional leaders who understand best practices and the research around curriculum instruction. Not just managers of their school, but visionaries about how to shape and change and build and close those achievement gaps based on the data that they're seeing. Which leads into data analysis, making sure that our, our school leaders consistently use data to drive their actions and know how to use data and know which data to use and, and the process to use them. Also, the understanding of systems, understanding systems research and ensuring that decisions are not made in isolation, but to always consider the system as a whole when deciding what actions are needed, especially when they're looking at interventions for a particular subgroup. So, you know, one thing is to say we, we're going to do this intervention for this group of students, but without understanding how that might impact the entire system. It, it may become counterintuitive to what they're actually trying to do. So building capacity around understanding how systems work and the systems research and understanding how they can use systems to benefit their students as long as they understand how they look at the systems as a whole for their school. And culturally responsive school systems and ensuring that our site administration are equity warriors. And just a little bit more specific on that. We want to develop our administrators as administrators equity disposition and the willingness to disrupt the status quo. Equity leadership begins with an unwavering conviction that every student is entitled to the premium schooling that only some are now currently receiving. A conviction that some student groups are not smarter than other student groups. A conviction that they will fight against the educational glass ceiling, the single most significant barrier to success for students with a legacy of poor academic success. And adults and institutional belief systems have whole different expectations for various student groups. Along those lines of belief, the equity study also shed light on some of those beliefs from our staff as we've had the opportunity to, to look at. The one that stuck out with, with me the most is that only 1% believe that all students can successfully graduate from, graduate UCCSU eligible. Just 1% believe that.
That was our, that was asked of our teachers and staff? Wow, that's awesome.
So, so back to my story, my sixth grade teacher. He said to me, when I had the conversation with him, he said, I'm disappointed in your actions. And it's true, you are not a strong student academically, but I believe in you. Not because of who you are now, but because of the person who I believe you will become.
I'm crying.
So every now and then, when I feel inadequate, I feel like I just don't have what it takes. I remember what the teacher told me and I shall try not to let him down. Just believing in our kids can create such a magical moment for them that allows them to become things that they may not have ever believed in themselves that they could become. I didn't have enough belief in myself, but just hearing someone believe enough in me gave me the, what I needed to hear to do the things I needed to do, you know, throughout my educational career. And it kind of leads me to that quote. It's, it's the people who no one imagines anything of who do the things that no one can imagine. And I believe that if we believe that for all of our kids, you know, it's, it's, it's limitless what, what potentials our students will have after they leave us. And I believe that every one of them can succeed if we give them the right support. So along with those beliefs, so how do we change the beliefs that we're seeing within our, you know, system? How do we truly move towards a restorative model? Where we can say we have eliminated the racisms and biases that lurk in the shadows of our current system and within perhaps some of our colleagues? I don't have a good answer for that. Other than to say, other than to, to acknowledge that we have institutional biases and there are just some people who, who, you know, just have bias and racist tendencies and are racist. But I believe if we change the system that truly reflects restorative justice, inclusivity, equity, we can start to push out those beliefs. If the system itself is designed for all kids to succeed, it won't matter what other people might believe because it doesn't allow them that room for that to thrive. So our system, at least at the very foundation, must be equitable, must be inclusive, must be restorative, must allow for all of our kids to succeed. And eventually those who, who don't believe that will hopefully find another place. This is a, a model that student services, Maitai and I have been working on. We understand that equity lens in itself doesn't help, you know, other areas like restorative practices. PBS in itself, restorative justice in itself doesn't answer or help us answer all of those challenges that we're seeing in our district. But together in this kind of three-pronged approach, we can create an instructional framework that can help address all of those areas and continuously improve what we're doing so that all kids can succeed within our system. So this is a visual of something that I hope that we'll be able to progressively build on and, and help develop. And of course, something that will, that I know Maitai is extremely passionate about as well. So I, I look forward to the continued collaboration with, with her department and with all of our other departments so that we can truly build a, a system that, that reflects, you know, the, the belief systems that we believe in and ensures that all our students can be successful.
Tony, can you share that with us?
Yes, absolutely. So next steps, we want to review and discuss the recommendations with our equity study committee. We want to recommend updates for new board policies that reflect a more equitable and inclusive education system. We want to work with the community partners and staff to find appropriate ways to support students who are not typically tracked by the federal, federal or the state, such as African-American students, our BIPOC students, our LGBTQI plus students. Those aren't things that the state tech currently tracks, but doesn't mean that we can't or shouldn't. Within the system that we develop, we'll be able to, I'm confident, support those students and make sure that they are also receiving the support they need so they, they can be successful. And my final comment is, you know, to develop and implement a system that is equitable, true, right, just for all of our students requires such things as commitment to the cause and a sense of urgency, strategic patience. Education sometimes doesn't move as fast as we'd like them to, but, but it moves regardless. And so hopefully, as it moves, we are continuously improving and getting better as an organization. Focus, sometimes things don't always work out the way we want them to, but that's because sometimes we don't give it enough time for it to work. So sometimes we have to remain focused and on, on our mission and, and see it through. And the last one is courage. Everything around us may at times try to pull us from the critical work. Other initiatives will come that may distract us from what we ought to be doing. Having the courage to say no. No to one more thing that is a distraction from our critical mission will often be the hardest thing. So courage will be critical in this time if we are truly about equity and access, restorative practices and eliminating, you know, biases and ensuring that our, our model is inclusive for all of our students. So having the courage to, to recognize that and, and to make those tough decisions and to, and to say no sometimes as we try to solve all the many problems that we, that, you know, every school system typically deals with. But I believe that if we are to be leaders in, in education, and there's no doubt or reason why we can't, we have to have that, that courage to, to move in that direction. So with that, thank you. Hopefully I wasn't too.
Thank you.
Two, Daniel.
Any questions or comments?
Sure. Okay. Do you want to question?
I'll ask you.
Okay. Thank you, Tony. I think Renda should surrender some of their contract money to you because I think a better job of their data than they did, quite frankly. Yeah, you answered a lot of the questions I think we had with Renda. And I thank you for that. I got a bunch of items that I want to throw out there and just ask you about. Let me see, where do I start? I appreciate putting, you're putting some flesh on the structural changes that can happen. And, and I really appreciate how you tied in, how some of these structures that need adjustment are adult behaviors. I, I do think that is, that is where a lot of it is. But then there's also, as that last slideshow, you know, with the concentric or with those circles, overlapping circles, the behaviors and attitudes, you know, also warrant examination and training in PD. So I have a set of questions about that. You know, we have three new PD days coming up on our agenda today that we're going to be thinking about. How, what are your initial thoughts about how PD might be addressing those structures, behaviors and attitudes among adults? And particularly, you know, I was really struck by your story about a teacher that motivated you and changed your behavior and your trajectory of your life. We heard from a, from a student of the month today of how an English teacher changed the trajectory of her career in English. I'll bet that there are equal amounts of experiences out there where a sour experience in the classroom turns off a student on something. Hearing the N-word in English class, completely disengaging student from seeing the Confederate flag in our class, completely disengaging kids from, certain kids from that subject matter because of that sour experience. I think these are some of the attitudes and behaviors that we can, that, you know, I think PD can address. I mean, we don't, I'm not interested in, in, you know, any kind of a, you know, hunting, you know, blame game, pointing, none of that. But I think we're after what you are describing, which is a community of teachers and, and staff and administrators who are all aligned in thinking all of our students have amazing potential to be successful in what they want to do. We have to help them find that avenue. So anyway, I'll, I'll start with that. What do you think about, you know, where PD fits in on behaviors and attitudes there?
Yeah, I mean, how do you change, you know, attitudes and behaviors? I, I know that we can't tell them to change. But what I've, what I've found to be somewhat successful is we inspire them to change. We provide and we model what that change looks like and we lead by example. And we find people who can be inspirational, who can shed light on those who are open to change, who may recognize that they have some attitudes that maybe don't align to, to what, what we believe. And so how do we help them along that, that, that path and that journey for themselves? For some people, it may take a little bit, you know, more, more inspirational conversations and that courageous conversations. You know, my mom always said that I was a two-slap kid, you know? It took two slaps before you need to get things sometimes. But, but I think, yeah, so, you know, we have to, I think, be the best versions of ourselves to help others. So when we meet them at their worst, we can, we can help them along. So part of it will be, how do we inspire that change? And how do we bring in professional development that inspires that change? And where it doesn't feel forced or make people feel defensive, but an opportunity for them to be vulnerable. And we'll model that for them. So that's my initial thinking. There's other things that we can do systematically that will have to, that will can help with that as well. I think once they start to see how kids can be successful despite what they might think, that could help change some, some, some hearts and minds as well. But it's definitely not just a systems issue. It is a hearts and minds issue as well that, that we'll all have to work on to figure out how to, how to move that faster than, than, than this currently moving now, especially when we start building those systems. Because systems, a lot of times only is as effective as the people who implement them.
Hold on, Mike. I had a few things. First of all, out of now, are there common assessments that we're using to locate this demographic? Is that the CAS testing?
So the CAS testing is a summative assessment typically one given once at the end of the year by the state. Common assessments is something that we would typically develop ourselves that would align. We're in the process of doing that for math now. There might be some common assessments within the subjects, but it's nothing district-wide that is, that follows any kind of systematic process to use that data to drive and make decisions.
So right now, like with the equity study, what scores were we looking at for testing?
Which scores?
Yeah.
I think the goal is that all students' achievement level rises, but those students were.
I mean, like, what tests were, were the students taking that we were looking at?
So the, the smarter balance is assessing math and, and English.
Okay.
And science.
Inside, they do science, yes.
Okay. I was just going to add that, like, I mean, it's CAS testing season at Palo Alto High right now. And half of the kids in my class are taking those like standardized tests are kind of like, well, what is this even for? And like, do I even have to try on this? And I feel like if we don't kind of create awareness of what they actually are taking these tests for and like, how, like, they don't understand that it kind of shows how we're doing it as a school. They just think, oh, it's for the state, I'm not going to try on it. I know kids who just skip through all the problems and they don't care. And I feel like it's not really an accurate representation of what they're capable of. So I feel like maybe creating incentive or awareness to do well on those tests might help. might help increase our scores a little bit. Also, with like encouraging students to join certain classes or A through G requirements, I feel like there's systemic stereotypes, like we are just doing.
Get the nail on the head.
Yeah, we're doing ASP interviews for next year. And I was just like, why don't we have more kids from different groups on campus trying out for ASP? And like, I've heard kids say, like, just that there's like this stereotype of the type of kids are in ASP. How do we encourage a bigger demographic to join the class and why is it like that? And so I feel like even it starts with like, it's bigger than just focus groups, like encouraging students to or teachers to recommend students to join certain classes or even having counselors encourage students to join those types of classes so that they feel welcomed and less intimidated. And just encouraging students to use their resources, talk to your counselor. If I didn't, like, have the initiative to do it myself, nobody would have told me, like, what path to take or what classes to take. So having that for all students and not just the students who are super motivated to get into those classes, it's like super important, or else they're just gonna kind of shrug it like, oh, if it's intimidating.
They're already doing that.
Yeah.
Well, I'm glad you brought that up. I was actually speaking with a student, she gave me permission to share this. I was speaking with her this past weekend. And she's choosing between three schools, UC, Santa Barbara, San Diego State, San Francisco State. And she said as a junior, like, she did go to her counselor, like, what are my college options? And they're like, the junior college. Like, that's it. And so, like you, she's motivated and driven. And she's like, no, those aren't my only options, but she had to seek that out herself. But then when I look at this as well, only 57% of the counselors even returned the surveys. And then you look further that, like, I just wonder what has the counselor's role been with this equity study with all of this data that you presented? I don't know.
And what triggers a counselor to reach out to a student? Okay, student failing four out of six classes and missing a lot of schools, should that trigger something? It doesn't, because I know kids who are in that boat.
And do we have a system that would trigger?
I thought we did have a system. When I was at kind of work, we did look at all the kids who had Ds and Fs. It's that with every one of them.
But that isn't necessarily, that's the only trigger that would bring kids into the counselor.
And sometimes that doesn't even bring them in, because I know kids who are doing very poorly at school and there's been nothing.
What else? Or even like, we have junior and senior conferences where they ask you to come in. That's the only time I've ever been asked into the counseling office. And it's kind of just like, what's your future? What are your plans? And it's if you're like, oh, I'm not going to college or I'm going to work. They're like, oh, are you working? Hey, great. Or like, oh, are you going to JC? Okay, great, here's what you need to do. But it's not like.
There's no encouragement.
There's no encouragement. It's not like, but you could do, you could do this, or you could go here. Or if you took this class, you'd be able to achieve so much more. It's like, it's, I feel like we're too comfortable with like letting kids like. Yeah, they're just accepting, like, you know, I just feel like we could do a better job at encouraging students to like really try and.
And I know counselors' workloads are pretty heavy, but still.
It's called education.
Yeah, but still, to allow kids to be failing and not doing anything about it, but just letting them fail.
Yeah.
Reminds me of that story.
Yeah.
And just back to this 50% number, do we know why? Like, did anyone reach out to the other, like, reach out to the 43%?
Yeah, and it was voluntary. But, you know, I'll say that the first place that I would look where where I think the the issue lies is is my department. You know, we have a responsibility to do better, ensuring and working with schools to to help them. I know our counselors, they do have a large caseload. They are working really hard and a lot of them do really care. I just think that my department could have could give better direction, create this, help them create systems where where there can be a process for those things so that we can utilize the skills and the talents that we have in our in our schools with our counselors and our teachers to just improve and do better. So, you know, I I know that, you know, every school site has some of its challenges and and processes and and culture. But I think my department takes a lot of responsibility with that because we, you know, we can help lead and shape and guide and and build systems that that can allow them to be much more effective and and give them the reasons and the rationales why we we want to do. So a lot of things that you you had suggested, so. So that's where I, you know, where I would like to start, when we look at, you know, how we can solve some of these problems.
Malaya, did you have any?
Yeah, I mean, just listening to what Katie was saying, like, I completely agreed with basically everything, you know. We're also taking cast testing right now. We're in the middle of like our last test, the math test. And, you know, it's it's very overwhelming. Students are being told like out of the blue, like, oh, yeah, we have this testing and, you know, you've got to take it. And then it's like, oh, it's just state testing, you know. And there's, there's really just no information about what is actually being used for and like what's actually going on. All you know is that you've got to do it.
Yeah, and and some teachers are just like, oh, it's, it's, it doesn't, it doesn't matter for your grades. It doesn't matter for college. In that case, students are just going to be like, oh.
Well, then why are you making us do this?
You know, I feel like if you, like, even just like a little, like, this is the test and this is what it's for, might encourage people to just like, maybe I should, maybe I should put some effort into this because if kids are just skipping through them, then it's not accurate, you know?
And to go along with, like, you know, that stereotype you kind of talked about earlier, like, there comes a point in high school where I've I've grown up in my educational career with those AP kids. And so I had those teachers that were like, listen, you should try on these tests because it it's a reflection of your class. And then I'll talk to my other friends that have never even taken an honors or AP class. And they're like, yeah, I don't know, I just, I kind of filled it out and then I left. And then, and I mean, I understand that, too. There's such an overwhelming sense of like work and burnout with students and like faculty that I've I've seen all around. But, you know, just information, I feel like there's a big lack of, you know, awareness about things, as Katie was saying.
I think in your presentation, Tony, you called it inconsistent expectations. Sounds like that's what Katie was describing to some extent.
And I think that's really accurate.
Is, you know, I'm curious, as we, you know, we always have hiring cycles. You know, and I know we've talked about this, board has talked about greater representation and how we're hiring with faculty, you know, that's going to take years to to have the faculty reflect our student populations, you know, demographically. But what about in terms of, you know, their attitudes toward the achievement gaps? Are those things that we that we are screening for as we as we hire people that we can screen for? Or how do we look for those kinds of candidates?
That's a really good question. And I've, ever since I was a principal, that's something that I've looked to try to figure out how to do. Because, you know, people come with a set of knowledge and skills. They have credentials that say that say they can teach you this and that. But how do you, how do you screen for 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 someone who cares? You know, how do you ask a question around that? You know, in my experiences, it's a lot of times asking situational questions. If this happens, what would you do? You know, 90% of your kids failed your English class, what would be your next step? You know, those that say, well, if 90% failed, that's probably on me. So I've got to figure out what I need to do, as opposed to blaming the kids or blaming someone to something else. So those situational questions can help maybe screen candidates, potential candidates. Because they already have credentials that says that they have the knowledge and skills. And knowledge and skills are things that we can teach. But how do you teach someone how to care or how to, you know, have attitudes that that are right and true and just for kids?
I think you have questions around philosophy of education. And you you start to get at some of those points and the questions. It it's challenging, but I'd much rather find someone who deeply cares about students and narrowing the achievement gap. I mean, I have the same skill, you can teach skills, you can give professional development, you can develop teachers. It's, but you can't, I mean, it's. And and, you know, to Katie's point, I mean, I appreciate you talking about the the, you know, Tony mentioned the the not achievement gap, but the skill, I'm losing my train of thought here.
The A through G requirements.
Systems, yeah. You were talking about systems and expectations. Malaya, over at CASA, I think it's, this is incredible, incredibly powerful feedback here.
Yes.
This is, this is what the the end user is experiencing to sort of take the task. I mean, if we're going to be putting a lot of time and effort into common assessments and gearing up for it, we want to put an emphasis on getting accurate data.
And also like what Sheldon was saying and what you're saying as well, Matthew, like, we like get humanity and compassion with our current teachers who only think 1% of our students can even achieve at the four-year level. Like, how how do we do that with PD? Like, these are the people that we have right now. Every day, like, the fact that our student is talking about faculty burnout. She should not know that her teachers are burnt out. That says something right there.
I mean, what what Katie brought up around, this is what I was trying to get at, the lived experience. I think that's another component that we don't have a good conversation about. You you start to see changes, it's the chicken and the egg. You start to see system changes, you start to see. But once you start to see lived experiences and say, oh, there's a student who I wouldn't, I wouldn't expect them to. And here they are, and they've graduated, fall into a class, and they don't maybe look like a student who I may associate with doing that. You start to have the little experiences and then you start to see, I think, there are a lot of changes in in attitude and changes in your own belief system when you when you have that lived experience. And students as well, right? Students, why aren't students signing up for leadership or ASB?
If we had, if we had students from like all groups on campus and not just one friend group, you know?
Because that's what ASB tends to be.
Yeah, it's all like the stereotype is that it's all the same kind of kids are in the same class. And I'm like, if we had, like, everybody in there, like a whole mix, people would be more excited about applying for the class, because they'd be like, well, I'm going to relate to somebody in there.
It changes the way, the things that you do.
But then year after year, too, right? Oh, my, if if it's just my, my brother did that or my sister or I was, my friend group does this versus, oh, if you start to broaden the experience, you start to see a change in in who's interested in the class. And and how are adults, are we talking to all students about?
Well, I think your experience with ASB is just exactly what the issue is. Is that students are not being encouraged to go out of their comfort zone and try new things.
It's the same for honors and AP classes, too, when they're active classes. It's like you, it's the same group of kids, like Maya was saying, like, I've been in the same classes with the same kids since honors, math, and eighth grade. It's like, there's no room for, I'm feeling like I can handle a better class this year. Like, maybe I took, you know, like, I feel like people should be encouraged to not follow like in their comfort zone.
They should be able to. And but they're not going to if they're, that's. Yeah, someone's got to push them and it's got to be the adults at the school. Someone stops them when they're trying to get through the door, that's an issue, too. Well, yeah, we we've been talking about gatekeeping.
We all need a sixth grade teacher, like Tony.
I don't want to have the next Cheryl Obama who's like, oh, I am, I went to Yale or wherever she went, Princeton, in spite of, like, my school counselor. Like, we don't want to produce those types of leaders who are looking back in our achieving in spite of the people that we have working with them every day. Caitlin, did you have anything before?
No, I appreciated that. I mean, Tony, I feel like you translated their study into something that made sense to my brain.
Yeah, thank you for that.
I was like, oh, my, like, what? Like, what? But yeah, I mean, I'm not a current student, but I also totally agree with Malaya and Katie that that was completely my experience. Yeah, I I talked to my school counselor once because I technically needed her to write a letter of recommendation and she spelled Stanford wrong. I didn't get into Stanford, but I went to Cal, so it worked out. But yeah, like, we see constantly that it's just the kids that were already in AP are going into AP. And, I mean, my mentee, luckily, at Petaluma High, she graduated last year. Her history teacher noticed that she really liked history and was really good at history and really cared about history. And so she was like, hey, you should take a push. And she did take a push and she pushed herself. And then COVID happened and she went back to regular English or regular history, but at least she tried, you know? And that made such a big difference to her confidence level and her own knowledge of herself and knowing her limits and her, and she was like, yeah, that's not my priority right now. I want to focus more on other things. But the fact that she tried was huge and it's because.
And she tried because of encouragement.
It's because Mitch Lunabut's believed in her.
Yeah, I just, I don't know, this really makes me sad and and angry that we have teachers in our system that think that that don't think highly of students, that don't, can't look at a student and see all the different components and just like, these are BAP students and they're all the same and they keep going. And we're not going to let anybody else, we're going to put up gates so that other kids who, like your mentee, can take those classes. And that's got to change. I've been screaming about it for six years.
Did you have anything, Maddie?
No, I just, I was fascinated by the whole discussion with everybody. And I really thank you, I I agree. I love getting that the student perspective.
Yeah, thank you.
You know, it's just, I just love this because it really does add, like, this is the perception you have and it confirms everything that we've seen. And so, and you're somebody that, you know, will advocate for yourself. And there is really probably 1% of our kids that do. That that statistic really is shocking. I mean, I understand in a way where it's coming from. On the other hand, to actually say it and believe that all, I mean, I don't know, there's a lot there that you gave us.
Thank you.
And I, yeah, thank you for redoing it and.
Putting it into better perspective. That statement like Sheldon.
What's the status of where in this country are they, you know, have they delivered all the deliverables? Are they done or do we still have them?
Yeah, I'll be meeting with them next week to review that. I know that what they're doing now is meeting all the deep dive schools to do a report. Because each one of those schools got reports and that they'll be presenting to their staff as well. So I need to follow up with those schools and make sure that they've scheduled that.
Are we going to see this?
Yeah, we we can have access to all those those data as well.
Also wanted to know something else, correct me if I'm reading this wrong, but I know you talk about like our feeder schools and our feeder districts, but it looks like it doesn't really matter. How are students do K312 and when they come in from Wa or San Diego, from wherever? Is that right?
Yeah, it doesn't seem like there's a correlation to that, whether they come outside or or not, the success rate or still.
Can you also, the second to last bullet point, followed McDowell students into high school? No distinct achievement pattern, what does that mean?
Is that the the last page?
On the last page, yes.
Yeah, so I think this is part of just questions that they had. But it couldn't be, it couldn't be triangulated, it couldn't, they couldn't validate it. It was just something that they had considered, but because there was just no way to to find supporting data, it was just something that that they couldn't use as a finding.
What were they trying to find? Like, if there was like a different achievement pattern for them?
Yeah, because they were considered a vulnerable school. And so to see if there was any kind of following those kids backwards and seeing how that, how their path went within our system, if there was any kind of patterns that they could see.
Well, that's good to know, because I know that we like hear that anecdotally a lot, like McDowell. And it's so it's good to know that at least, I mean, well, not good, but yeah, that's, it's the same. They're not any worse off when they get to, you know, our secondary level. And then what role do you see 10,000 degrees or other groups playing in the guidance alignment that you talked about earlier?
Yeah, so I think I pointed at the next board meeting to give a kind of an update on 10,000 degrees. We had a meeting with 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 them with the. We had a meeting with, um, with, with them, with the, with us, the site principals. And they gave us some data, so I can share that with you fire. But yeah, there, there is some good data around there.
And I don't know if, if in their contract or in this contract, there was a deliverable that was an actual written report. You know, aside from a PowerPoint slide and a methodology, you know, description. But if there isn't, I'd still like to see one. I, I feel like, you know, on one hand, I'm kind of disappointed with their presentation. It was kind of, you know, given the amount of effort that they put into the data collection. But you know, I, I don't want to waste a really great data collection effort. I'm convinced that they have really good data.
Yeah.
I'm, but I, you know, I want to read something. I'm afraid to read here.
We paid for that data.
Yeah. Yeah. And all we got was the printout of the PowerPoint, which was kind of like, oh, just.
So what would you like to say?
I want to see your report. I want to, I was expecting an equity study, something that, you know, was deliverable that I could read, that we could plow under, that could guide our discussions and how we're going to address the systemic, attitudinal, behavioral, you know, uh, barriers to educational equity in our district. That's what I was expecting.
So we want like a Chris Thomas level.
Bound. It's 75. Good.
We want binders. Hey, I read those.
Combo of a Tony flaw presentation and a Chris Thomas presentation.
Yes.
There we go. Anyone else?
I just want to say thank you, Tony, for putting this together, kind of giving us what we needed to hear about what was discovered in the Arinda study. Because we didn't really get that from the presentation.
Yeah, I was hoping I could help clarify some of those things, so.
You did, thank you.
Malaya or Katie? I have the last word.
Yeah, I mean, I was just kind of going to say, you know, when you were talking about like how do you measure student cares? I think it's not about whether or not the student care, like the students care. I think it's about like whether or not they're getting that support and that inspiration and push. Because you know, at a certain point, kids get tired of waiting and you know, then those stereotypes kind of come up of like the kids that can, the kids that don't. And you know, just opening up discussions with those students that are like stereotypically seen as, you know, not going to be able to get into a UC or a CSU. Opening up discussions like as simple as how are you and like, like, what are you interested in? Because like in our classes right now, we're taught either get your work done, to be done with the class or get your work done so that you can get into a college. And that's kind of like how the classes seem to be split up. It's not get your work done so you can find what you're passionate about and what you're interested in, which is what school I think is supposed to like set you up for, because it's that passion and that drive that like makes you want to continue the work that you're going to be doing in the future.
Great point.
Yes.
That's so good. Great sum, sum it up. That was perfect.
All right, let's take a break, five minutes.
I'm going to talk to my team about it.
Those breaks are never played.
You can open the, you can open the chat. No, you're right. All right.
Regent hanging at seven forty-seven. Next up is comments from the public on non-agendized. If you have a comment on something that is not on the agenda, we're going to open the chat. Put your first and last name in the chat and item which you would like to speak towards. While the chat's open, I'm going to read our public comment. Under Government Code Section five four nine five four point three A, members of the public have the right to address the governing board on any items of interest, providing it relates to the subject matter jurisdiction of the school district. While government code allows speakers to criticize the district's policies, procedures, programs, services, and/or employees, the district does have a policy specific to complaints against employees. Should comments from the public pertain to a specific district employee, the board requests that the complaint first be submitted in writing to the employee's immediate supervisor for investigation. If the comment is about something that is not on the agenda, it will be heard only during the public comment on non-agendized items period. Once that part of the meeting is over, comments will only be taken on agenda items during the discussion of those items. The board values public comments. Now, though we cannot take action or discuss items on the agenda, we listen carefully and appreciate input from the public. Public comments are subject to a four-minute per person limit or a twenty-minute limit per subject matter.
Two so far. I think it's just the one.
It just.
Yeah, someone apologized.
And I don't even have my glasses.
I know, I can't see.
It's blurry, but I, I've been reading about my glasses since like five.
But it's just so fun. These don't help.
All right.
When it's done.
I think we can close the chat. We've got one, one comment.
So Sarah's side check.
Bring Sarah, the topic here. SS teacher residency grants from state and thank you for the work, Tony. Hi, Sarah.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. You all are amazing and thank you for the work that you do. I really appreciate the time and energy that you all put into showing up every day, particularly on a day like this where Tony and Maité and your whole team and all of the teachers and all of the meetings that you all have had to meet with our LGBTQ community that I've been a part of as well as other community members to really get a full, well-rounded scope on the, on the equity study that you and your team have put together. I wanted to just resoundingly say thank you for years. We've, you know, I've, I've seen this board come together and do this, and this is an incredible accomplishment. It is also the beginning of this accomplishment, the beginning of the next steps, and I look forward to seeing where we get to move forward with it. One of the things that I think is really vital that we look at as well is retention of our teachers and our teachers, particularly our teachers of color and how, and working to create an environment that is supportive and uplifting of our, our teachers of color. To that end, I'm wondering if you all know about, and I'm sure you do because you're rad that way, that the state is giving away, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars to school districts to do teacher residency programs for them to have. I think each school district could get upwards of like $200,000 to be able to sponsor up to like twenty different teachers that are getting their credentials and masters through Sonoma State or Dominican College or something of the sort. And it could be a really good way for us to begin to raise up some teachers and particularly the teachers of color pipeline coming up from our local community, because it's really difficult to get teachers to come move here because it's so expensive for people to live here. So I would love to hear more about that. And again, thank you all for the work that you're doing. It was really good to hear, Tony, all the work that you did. I'm so happy for that teacher that came back around and told you because we are so happy to have you and Maité and the whole team here doing the work. So thank you all. I really appreciate it.
Sarah.
Sarah. All right, that was it. Next up, report on activities and correspondence. Since the last board meeting, wiffle ball on the Amar Pata Totos team, right?
Yep.
For the rotary.
We got the spirit awards.
Kevin was so excited. Well, his PPFC.
Oh, that's right. Yeah.
I was too scared.
A lot of people got hurt because we were on the.
Yeah, see, that would have been.
Scared part of the field that had gopher holes.
I'm glad you made it out safely. Also, LCAP meeting, Petaluma Art Center Student Art Show, Equity Reboot Committee, Healthy Choices Committee, Kennerworth Track Meet, CSBA Coast to Coast Virtual Training, Kennerworth Fifteen Minute Hamlet, Casa Grande Esports Match, PEF Scholarship Night, IOU Meeting, Student Council Advisory Planning Meeting, and Casa Cultural Festival Planning Meeting. So I'd love to hear about the Casa Cultural Festival planning.
So basically, a lot of the club presidents and like advisors are getting together to organize a festival that's going to be happening later in the, either this month or next month. And we're going to spread the word out to our clubs and we're going to get together and talk about food that we can bring and, you know, just a representation of different cultures. It's going to be like. Please make sure we know when that's.
Yeah.
It's after, after school, I think, May twenty-first, possibly.
Okay.
Yeah, but I, I can email once we figure out all the details.
That would be awesome. Thank you.
If it's a specific event?
Yeah, it's, it's, you know, anybody's welcome to come. But, you know, I don't think anybody who's not friends with somebody in, in the clubs are going to go, so. Yes.
So is it outside?
Yeah, it's in the LA.
LA, okay. And I left off, there were two other events, activities, McNear School Play, right? And a site visit to McNear. But I also wanted to touch on the Healthy Choices Committee that Himana, Maité, and Jamie had. I thought it was great. I didn't know what to expect. It was parents, admin, school nurse, folks from Petaluma People Services Center, PPD Officer, just talking about what the community can do to like tobacco cessation. There was a lot of talk about fentanyl. And in the end, I think one of the big takeaways is that we need more folks from the city of Petaluma there. So hopefully we can get like the city manager and some city council people there to the next meeting. I've reached out to one of them, hopefully, but I thought it was great. So thank you. I thought it was really informative and a good community build, so. Anyone else want to share from anything? All right. Comments from the public on consent agenda items. We'll leave the chat open for around a minute. So if you want to comment on something that's on the agenda, please put your first and last name in the chat and what you would like to speak about. Give it about ten more seconds and then close. All right, let's close the chat. And move on. Adoption and approval of the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda by consolidated motion.
One second. All right, any questions, comments?
Yeah, one quick question about eleven point two point seven, the contract for the Casa bathrooms. It just seems like that one bid is so low compared to the other ones. How do we know that they're not going to have a bunch of change order? Like, how do you handle that when that happens?
Yeah, we actually do reference checking on, on various contractors when they come in.
Okay.
But honestly, you know, we, we have to just manage the contract closely and make sure that we're holding their feet to the fire. But you're right. I mean, when you're doing a public bid, we're obligated to take the low bidder. And it's a very difficult thing to prove any contractor not responsible. That's why we say the lowest responsive responsible bidder.
Right.
So, but, but this is a generally a, a good contractor and, you know, there's lots of reasons why, why it may have come in less. It's a small project, so we're not too concerned about it.
Sweet. Sounds good.
Good eye. I mean, it's a good question. Go ahead, Sheldon.
Okay, I got a couple. Services footsteps to freedom proposal. Sorry to see it postponed, but it actually gives us an opportunity to address my question, which is, you know, how? I know that we're sponsoring them and they would want to buy for them. Seems like it's an opportunity to be something for the whole community, especially since the other districts feed into ours at the secondary level. Is, is there or was there an invitation that went out to all the schools and love for this event? And I'm also wondering, is there an opportunity here to partner with the city to, you know, maybe use Luquezi, a larger venue, and make it really a community event? And I just feel like this is such a rare opportunity to get some, a really powerful event here that addresses, you know, some of our goals and could help us out, you know, in the long run in terms of feeder schools and the kids in those schools coming to our district. That's the question is, who was invited and how are we marketing it?
Yeah, I mean, we, we certainly, you know, we started messaging out to, to family, Pedalman City Schools families. But when I say Pedalman City Schools families, right, you think about feeder schools, you have older brother, older sister or NPCS. And of course, anyone, you know, we, we talked about on social media, you know, anyone's, anyone was welcome to come. We just happened to host it, one evening event at Pedalman High, one, one at Casa. We were really trying to target the comprehensive schools where Casa would have a day to have, you know, classes in and out and then have it on the campus. Pedalman Junior and Kennerworth given half a day where classes, I mean, obviously new, probably the social studies, English classes wanted to come in there. And then Pedalman High having that opportunity as well. We could potentially look in, in that middle day and having them do an evening event at something like Luquezi, we could, we can, we can look into it for when, you know, and, and it's unfortunate we, that we had to postpone, but it's out of our, it's out of our control, that, that piece. But certainly we could reach out to some of our other interests and, and, you know, invite.
Or maybe the library.
I reached out to, I mean, y'all got a, you all got an invite, handwritten invitation from me. We've sent those out to all city council members, police chief, fire chief. I was talking with, you know, I've talked to quite a few people just about, hey, come on, come on down. We really want, we want people to be involved, so.
So they will be coming in the fall, we hope.
That's, yeah, we, we're. The, the presenter's going through some family tragedy right now and when we have, we have better sense for timing, well, I'll let you guys know.
Good.
Yeah, I would, I mean, personally, I would like to see, you know, maybe like, I like your solution, that middle day.
Yeah.
Something at Luquezi, get the, you know, maybe we can get the city to donate. For us for one night.
Yeah.
I mean, we're paying for it, so if they can give us space, that would be fantastic.
They have that great newsletter that goes out, too. They can advertise it in that newsletter.
For Luquezi?
Well, this is the city. The city has a really great.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we could certainly do that. And I, I think, you know, I know it's a little, slightly off topic, but the, the May fourth, that Wednesday, Aaron Vandermeer here, and, you know, she and Gina have been working so incredibly hard on the art, getting this curated art fair. Our first annual, right, Aaron? Art fair. And I'm super, super excited about that, so.
What'd you say, Aaron? I didn't hear you.
May four is the opening.
Yes.
Yeah, we got a little call. All right, I did have a question about, sorry, did you have more about that?
I do, but you go first.
No, you go. Go ahead.
All right.
Might have the same question.
I got a few.
Student Services, the vaping cessation program. I mean.
Yeah.
Of course, pick it up, you know, take advantage of a free opportunity.
Yeah.
I didn't see anything in there about program evaluation to know, you know, if this is going to be, you know, if this is wildly successful, it might be something we want to follow up on. But, and so is there, are there plans for any kind of assessment of the program?
And maybe, maybe give a quick overview.
Evaluation.
Yeah.
Do participants have an evaluation?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
No, no, go ahead.
Give it over to you.
You go.
Just, just give a quick overview and then answer the show.
This is a, it is a pilot program. And it's, there's still a bit, quite a bit of curriculum around this one. So we've been looking, attending different meetings to get more information. And so this is an opportunity to, for students who are caught vaping or want to quit, they will come to the campus and they will work with students. There are some remote opportunities as well. And as we mentioned, it is, it is free to us for now. I'm sure there's an evaluation component and I'll get back to you on exactly what that is because I can't imagine that there, I just don't know the details of it. And it is part of our TOB grant, so that is also another piece of this that we're reading the requirements of that grant. So, and this has actually come up many, many times over the course of the last, because we are trying to become more restorative in our, in work, in our work, particularly with these kinds of offenses that are happening. And staff, admin staff doesn't have a lot of options when it comes to how to support kids who are finding themselves in these situations. So this is, we're really excited about this opportunity.
I, I wanted to just kind of piggyback onto that, that I, I love that it had curriculum, that it was actually five days, that there was, you know, some kind of oversight. It didn't say anything about remote. I would not think that would be at all successful. So I don't even know why they're bothering, but that's just my opinion.
It is an option. If there, they do have a number of students they want to be able to see, and I'm, I'm pretty sure we'll meet that benchmark, but there are.
So that was my question, was like, how does it work if it's five days? And you, you know, is it at a particular place, like once a month, or how do you?
They're going to be Casa and, and.
But you have somebody that's busted in October and then they start the program and somebody three weeks later. How does that, I, I don't understand how that would actually.
They are local, they're in Santa Rosa, so they, we will have to work out schedules to be able to be the needs of those students. That's why I'm saying there is a remote option. Like, say there is one student and there are not, not enough students for them to come here. That would be how they might address that situation.
What about the, you said.
I know, it's not, I know.
What about Carpe?
I believe that the alternative schools are also included as.
Okay. And is there, do they have any experience or are they ever thinking about expanding informational kinds of programs into junior high and upper elementary? Because we've heard young parents that they would really like to have information, especially in sixth grade where they miss it, you know?
Yeah, that was a big topic that came up in the, that's exactly the conversation we were having. You're welcome. Yeah, that's one of the things that we talked about is making sure that we have something in place for that sixth grade, seventh grade transition, because that seems to be a pinch point for a number, that was mentioned in a number of table groups, that we really need to have something in place at that age. So, thank you for.
Fair.
And I will learn more about the scheduling and the evaluation, so I can get that to you.
Thanks.
Did I have question eleven point two point eight, McDowell?
Oh, yeah.
Did you have a? Matty, could you give a certain question? I just wanted to know what's going on.
Chris, checked about the eleven, eleven point two point eight. Approval to reject all bids. I think the bids all came in way higher than we.
Yeah, I'll say.
I, I think, I think it's really indicative of the bidding climate at this moment. I think it was also indicative of the fact that we were trying to condense a very, you know, a project into a short window. And that's kind of coupled with the fact that there are such procurement challenges out there. So, so we're, 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 we're still very motivated to get this project done. But we're going to rethink it. So for example, there's a very large awning that used to be attached to the building and we have demolished that and taken that out. That's a very, it's a significant cost item with a long lead time. And so we're going to be looking at procuring that ourselves and having it available once we go out to bid. We're going to be looking at kind of how do we do more of a multi-prime where we're looking at specific trades and kind of functioning as the general contractor, doing the roofing separate, for example. We've already ordered the mechanical equipment because that's also taking anywhere from fifteen to twenty weeks. The other, the other part of it is what we have found when we ordered the mechanical equipment, there's curbs that you have to order that the mechanical units sit on, on the roof, right? So they don't sit right on the roof, they sit on a curb. The curbs right now, we ordered them in March, they're going to be here, they're going to be shipped around September twenty-first.
Oh, my goodness.
So there's also a significant challenge in that we were trying to bid this project, we were trying to have it done and completed in May, June, and July. But we're not even going to get the curbs to put the mechanical units on until mid-September. So just looking at everything, the fact that the bids came in so high, looking at the timing of the project, the challenges in procuring, we decided to reject all the bids or recommend that you reject the bids. We rethink the project, put it back out to bid, possibly in August, so that we can complete it September, on October. It, it's a little difficult because this is a grant-funded, partially grant-funded project. We've been delayed because of COVID, so we're super motivated to get it done. And we're now in the process of talking to our community partners who were hoping to have move in summer. So it's, it's challenging at best. We did not make this recommendation late.
This is that former school.
The one on the corner, Maria McDowell. And we've done a lot of work. It's, it's been abated, so we've removed all the hazmat. It's totally ready to go. But we want to make sure that we're, we're, you know, if it had only come in a hundred thousand over budget, but literally we were expecting it to be under a million. So that's, that's significant, both in dollars and percentages. And so we just, and, and given the timing of when we can actually procure some of the materials, like the curbs for the mechanical units, we just decided we needed to rethink it a little bit. Thank you for asking.
Just along those same lines, the HVAC, mechanical equipment at Casa Grande.
Just a little bit, or just a few pieces of equipment, the eight hundred thousand.
Yes. It's under a million. I was just wondering, I mean, I think it's a really creative idea that we're, am I understanding it right? That we're buying the equipment ourselves as a district? So then what is that kind of, in terms of owning the units down the road? I'm just kind of curious about the insurance implications and various other things that might come into play? And is this, how is this an advantage? I mean, it sounds like a real advantage.
So no, those are great questions. And I realize this district hasn't had a longstanding past practice of doing this. This is actually a pretty typical industry standard where you do what's called, you know, basically owner provide contractor installed. And so, or it's OFCI, Owner Furnished Contractor Installed, that's the official term for it. So it's not that unusual. We did a lot of this when I was in Nevada. We did, when we were doing very large mechanical unit replacements at various school sites, we would purchase the mechanical units ourselves. So there is a little bit of risk that we take on in that, you know, we need to make sure we've got all of the equipment. Where do we store all of the equipment? How do we manage that? But we really felt like we had no choice because even with those mechanical units, and we ordered them, it's really a ratification. We ordered them the end of March to try to get them in. They were telling us about twenty weeks, which would put us about the end of July. We're not sure that that's going to be a solid date, even at this point. So we're seeing a lot of shipping delays, procurement challenges. We're actually looking at most likely delaying other projects, like the last phase for some of our schools because we just can't get mechanical units. I mean, when we're buying equipment in March and we can't get them in until maybe September, you, you can, you know what I mean? Building M at Casa is such a challenging situation that we felt like we needed to move forward and do the best we could trying to get it in. I will tell you, we may not be able to install all of those units by the time school starts. They may not be here. So we're looking at backup plans. We're looking at, I was talking to Bennett earlier today, our Director of Maintenance, and having conversations about purchasing mobile AC units. How expensive? How much do they work? Can we have those, you know, on hand so that we can help to address? We don't have all of the units installed. We'll be working with the school site, talking to them about that. There's just not a lot of good options, given the situation we're in for trying to get our hands on these types of goods. And it's, it's across the board with a lot of different things. Mechanical units in particular are challenging, but even refrigeration, we're trying to buy backup coolers for our food service department. You know, increasing some of our refrigeration and freezers. And even that's, those are long lead items, milk coolers, anything mechanical is just taking a long time to get. So, yeah, we, we're dipping our toes in and, and we think we're, we're doing a really good job of running it through a submittal process, making sure that the mechanical engineers are giving their yes to the list of equipment. We're piggybacking on state contracts so that we're getting government pricing. So we're doing everything we can. Ultimately, it could also be a cost savings because we're not necessarily paying markup, you know? So anyway, it's, it's, it's going to be an interesting summer because we have a lot of mechanical units that we need to replace. We're, we're right at the twenty to twenty-five year mark on most of our units. They're circa nineteen ninety-five to two thousand two, two thousand three. And we've been, and I'll be honest with you, we've been really working our units hard. We're losing a lot of units because our teachers, based on CDPH guidelines, have left classroom doors open and windows open, which is just making the units do double time. We're going to be recommending they not do that next year because our units are effectively working. They work less effectively with everything open and it's really taking a toll on units that are older. So you can imagine, you know, when, when I grew up, it's like, shut the door, the heat's on, you know what I mean? So the units are just constantly running, trying to accommodate having windows and doors open. And, and yet at the same time, it's a pandemic, so we've been also, we've been trying to balance that, but it's definitely taking a toll. And so we've been doing a lot of, a lot of evaluation of mechanical units across the district. So it is, it, it was a large purchase, so.
Good. Thank you. I was just curious. Anyone else? For comments? All right, all in favor? I pose, right. Comments from the public on action items. If you have a comment on one of the action items that we have listed here, please put your first and last name in the chat.
please put your first and last name in the chat.
Anything for the chat? There are no, no public comments on action items?
Hey, first up is our old friend, AB three sixty-one. So the options are remote only, which we're not doing, hybrid, which is what we're currently giving, or in-person only, we've been doing number two for, well, since the school year started, so. How does everyone feel about that, staying hybrid?
I think staying in hybrid makes the most sense.
At least through the school year.
I think it's more accessible for more teachers and staff and family members, so I personally think we should do it as long as we're legally allowed to.
Yep, I agree.
So with that being said, I move to stay in hybrid option for another month.
Second.
However long we're allowed to.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Week of the teacher.
I moved to pass resolution two one two two dash two five. You're honoring the contributions of teachers.
Sorry, I second.
Did you want to say?
Well, we typically have, we, we read it, you know, read the resolution.
Yeah.
All right. Resolution of Board of Education, High School District honoring contributions. Just all of education. Declaring the week of May, second through sixth, two thousand twenty-two, as the week of the teacher. Whereas California Education Code Section three seven two 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 sets aside the second Wednesday in May as the day of the teacher and encourages suitable commemorative exercises directing attention to teachers and the teaching profession. Whereas the Board of Education of the Petaluma City Elementary and Joint Union High School Districts has the utmost respect and admiration for Petaluma's professional teachers who have dedicated their lives and their talents to the education of our students, who are truly our most precious and important resource. Whereas the Board of Education recognizes the truly vital role of teachers in realizing the vision of California, the California State Board of Education of California for public education. All California students of the twenty-first century will attain the highest level of academic knowledge, applied learning, and performance skills to ensure fulfilling personal lives and careers and contribute to the civic and economic progress of our diverse and changing democratic society. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Petaluma City Elementary School District and the Petaluma Joint Union High School Districts hereby proclaim the week of May second through the sixth, two thousand twenty-two, the week of the teacher, extending its sincere appreciation to the teachers in the district who make our public schools successful.
All right, thank you. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, I'm sorry, July, I assumed that you guys were.
And. All right, so. Item thirteen point one point three, we go May fifteenth through twenty-first, Classified School Employees Week. Do you want to read that as well?
Read that?
Okay.
Resolution of the Board of Education of the Petaluma City Elementary and Joint Union High School Districts honoring the contribution of the classified school employees to quality education and declaring the week of May fifteenth through the twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two, as the class, as Classified School Employees Week. Whereas classified school employees provide valuable services to the schools and the students of Petaluma City School Districts and whereas classified school employees contribute to the establishment and promotion of a positive instructional environment and whereas classified school employees employed by the Petaluma School Districts strive for excellence in all areas relative to the educational community. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Petaluma School Districts hereby recognize and wish to, wish to honor the contribution of the classified school employees to quality education in the state of California and in the Petaluma School Districts and declare the week of May fifteenth through the twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two, as Classified School Employees Week in the Petaluma School Districts.
To approve Resolution twenty-one twenty-two dash twenty-six.
I second. All in favor?
Aye.
I know, I feel like you should be clapping after.
I know.
Next up is declaring May Jewish American Heritage Month. I just wanted to acknowledge the Jewish Community Relations Council, who reached out to us about recognizing Jewish American Heritage Month and for being such, such a great resource to us, so.
Can I get a motion? Are we reading this one too? Yeah.
I think we should.
Well, it might make sense to have so, someone, a board member or one of us happy to read it too, but.
I'll read it. I don't have it in front of me, though.
Do you want to read it, Matthew?
Sure.
I would have.
I can also read it, I have it in front of me. Can you see it?
Whereas for thousands of years, members of Jewish communities have have sustained their strong identity and rich traditions while persevering through persecution, enslavement, forced segregation, and the horrors of the Holocaust. And whereas since sixteen fifty-four, Jews have been contributing to the culture and history of the United States of America while achieving great success, strengthening the country, and helping shape America through a deep commitment to faith, family, and community. And whereas in his second year in office, President George Washington wrote a letter to the Turo synagogue in Newport, Rhode Island, one of the first Jews, Jewish houses of worship in the United States of America, reaffirming the nation's commitment to religious freedom and noting that the government of the United States would give to bigotry no sanction and to persecution no assistance. As he also emphasized that all Americans are entitled to liberty of conscious, conscious and immunity and immunities of citizenship. And whereas it was that, that belief that drew generations of Jewish immigrants to the United States of America to build their lives, whether that included Jewish families fleeing pogroms or persecution in Europe during the last century, Holocaust survivors, or Jews trapped behind the Iron Curtain. And whereas this history has led many Jewish Americans to find common cause with the Civil Rights Movement. And Jewish Americans have continued their strong support for liberty and human dignity, thus uniting to end discrimination in voting, employment, and public accommodation, while also supporting equity for women, farm workers, the disabled, and LGBTQIA plus Americans. And whereas Jewish Americans, including those in Petaluma, continue to contribute to the nation's progress as scientists, teachers, entrepreneurs, members of the armed forces, public servants, private citizens, leaders, parents, and citizens in all walks of life. And whereas the Petaluma City Elementary and Petaluma Joint High School Districts have acknowledged and recognized the urgent need to educate students in the community on Jewish history and culture. And whereas oops, moved it too soon. And whereas Jewish Americans, including those in Petaluma, continue to contribute to the nation's. There we go. Thank you. Contribute. Continue to contribute to the nation's progress as science, oh, we already read that. And whereas the Petaluma City Elementary and Petaluma Joint Union High School Districts have acknowledged and recognized the urgent need to educate students in the community on Jewish history and culture. And whereas anyone interested in learning more about the heritage and contributions of Jewish Americans, as well as other resources, should visit www.jewishheritagemonth. Now, therefore, be it resolved that Jewish American Heritage Month is the time when the, when the rich history of Jewish Americans is celebrated and their contributions to this nation are honored. And thus, the Petaluma City Elementary and Petaluma Joint Union High School District Board of Education hereby recognize May as Jewish American Heritage Month and encourages all Petaluma families, students, and staff to acknowledge and honor Jewish Americans for their notable accomplishments and outstanding service to the community of Petaluma, the state of California, and the nation writ large.
Thank you. All right.
I move to approve Resolution twenty-one twenty-two dash twenty-seven.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Right.
Approval of the revised school calendars for the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school year for both traditional and year-round. Did you want to talk about the changes that were made, Jason?
Yeah, so, thank you. So we have worked with PFT to negotiate three additional professional development days. And in an effort to have those for the calendar with the most impactful impact as possible to families, we placed two of those days before school starts, which extends the teacher calendar forward a little bit. And it can, one at the end of the year. Additionally, while we were doing this work on the calendar, we, the one change that will affect our students and families is that we our professional development days on the fifth and sixth of January are going to be moved to February thirteenth and fourteenth. February thirteenth was previously going to be Lincoln's Holiday Observed, which is going to be the next item. And that means that December twenty-second needed to become a student day. And so those are, those are the main changes that we have on this calendar, which will give us better, better time and focus time for professional development for our staff with as very minimal, we feel very minimal impact overall to our families in terms of what we've already published and approved.
And just as we're doing this year, those, that, that's one time for two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three. We're using COVID funding in order to help to fund that, so.
I move to approve the revised school calendars for two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three.
I'll second.
All right, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. One more. Is it you as well, Jason?
This is me as well.
What you were referring to.
Coming on strong. This resolution was to accommodate the change in the calendar. So this is a resolution of the Board of Education, Petaluma City School, Elementary School District, and Petaluma Joint Union High School District designating an alternate holiday in lieu of the regular holiday for the twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three school year. Whereas Education Code thirty-seven two two zero, school holidays and four five two oh five, classified employee holidays authorize school districts to designate other days during the school years as the holidays to which students and classified employees are entitled in lieu of certain holidays designated as their regular holidays by Section four five two oh five. And whereas such designation must provide at least a three-day weekend for classified employees. And whereas a classified employee who would be entitled to a regular paid holiday would not be in paid status during any portion of the working day immediately preceding or succeeding the day so designated in lieu of the regular holiday shall be entitled to the regular holiday and shall be paid double time and a half if required to work on the regular holiday. Now, therefore, be it resolved that February twelfth, two thousand twenty-three, known as Lincoln's Holiday, shall be observed on January sixth, two thousand twenty-three.
Okay.
I move to approve Resolution twenty-one twenty-two dash twenty-eight.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, um, Williams quarterly sound settlement, looks like none. No evidence. All right, future business.
Yeah, I'd like an update on when we're gonna know if, about our new student board members for next year, including someone from Alt Ed.
Yes.
I don't know what, if, yeah.
We, we, we're just speaking, this, this is in May, what's the deadline, Tony?
May twenty.
May through, they're working, they're working through the the logistics right now at the school sites and, you know, recognizing Katie Malaya and then moving on with the votes at the school sites too, so we should know by the end of May.
Cool.
Yeah. Can they be?
Yes.
They can regroup.
Yeah.
Mr. Moore was asking me that.
I just want to say that I've really, really appreciated both of you.
Wonderful.
Yeah, it's been excellent. So thank you. You're doing a great job.
Fearless.
Yeah.
You can't.
I mean, we have to run again.
Yes. As long, as long as all that is actually given us a young person this time.
Yes.
That's what I was mostly.
We have every indent to that, yes.
Maddie?
Oh, I was just, um, I, I, I was wondering about the EL roadmap. We had a really great presentation right before COVID hit. And, and it was, it was really, you know, I think the roadmap had just come out. It just feels like a good time to kind of know when it's gonna start up again. I know Krista O'Connor was on that committee, she, I haven't, I haven't personally talked to her, but I know that it's something that, it was such a positive, wonderful thing. We have the EL Committee, the LCAP, all these different things that are looked, the equity study. So I'd like to kind of have a review of it, but also like how it fits in with everything else that we're doing. You know what I mean?
Yeah, so we can do a presentation on the EL Committee, EL asset plan, that will include the roadmap and.
And that would include, okay, perfect. Okay. Also, there was, there's something written about taking honors classes and AP classes, I'm not sure if it's a board resolution. But anyway, I would like to revisit it. I would like to rewrite, rewrite, it's very clunky and there's a lot of grammar problems in there. And it also says it's okay to.
The board policy and administrative regulation that we're, we are, we are working on right now.
You are, because I've been more than happy to comment. I read it and was not really.
In process.
Okay, good, thank you.
Anyone else?
Um, someone mentioned before, was one of the public commenters a couple meetings ago about transportation. I know there's been a lot of questions about transportation, like which teams, like what's the actual access to buses, so I'd love to hear more about that. And what the limitations are to transporting students to and from games, so, yeah.
Yeah, no, absolutely, because honestly, what we're playing, we're working with first student right now to bring a, to get a contract renewal. And we also are hoping, we're, we're exploring the possibility of we're to see more white fleet to provide more flexibility, because hiring certified bus drivers is super challenging. We're looking at trying to identify either hybrid or electric, so we can also move in that direction. As well as some white fleet for our maintenance department, either in hybrid or electric, so we would anticipate bringing something back to you, probably if not in May or June, and looking at the possibility, so we can incorporate that in at that time. But we are actively trying to pursue options, so we can bring something back. Because transportation out there is challenging across the nation.
Yeah. All right, anything else? Malaya or Katie? No?
All right, with that, we are adjourned.